We appreciate it. First, just a few housekeeping items. Please make sure that you keep your phone muted when not speaking. It really helps to keep the feedback to a minimal. And so I appreciate everybody doing that. And also, secondly, when I say raise your hand, that is your icon hand in the app, in the teleconference app, not your physical hand. So just keep those things in mind. We'll go slow. Make sure that we get everybody on record and make sure the meeting goes smoothly. And for any reason, if any questions, the director and the staff is available and myself. So I appreciate everybody joining us. And so the second order of business is to establish that we can have this telephonic meeting due to the COVID-19. And I want to handle, which is permitted under the governor's executive order number 16. And I'm going to handle it over to our attorney, Mr. Juan Poole. You're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. As you know, the state and local law regarding open meetings requires that most or all boards and commissions of governments meet in public. However, due to the global pandemic, COVID-19, the governor has entered into certain executive orders that would allow boards and commissions to meet telephonically or electronically in order to conduct this business, so long as it's essential and so long as the business, so long as conducting that meeting electronically or telephonically is needed to protect the health, safety, and well-being of Tennessee. And so I think the chair should solicit a motion to that effect if this board wants to host this meeting electronically. However, prior to doing that, we will just get a roll call vote to establish that we have enough members present here for a quorum.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Poole, for reminding me of that. I was jumping ahead. So we do first need to establish a quorum, and I do apologize. And so I will, I think Commissioner, I want to see, I think Vice Chair Farr is joining us a little later. And so we'll get her to, we'll recognize her when she is present. So we'll go down to the members, and if you would just say you're present. Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Lawson.
Present.
Council Lady Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Sims.
Present.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Here.
And I am present as well. And so we have six members for a quorum. And going back to our attorney, Mr. Poole has explained why we are holding this meeting telephonically and the legalities of that. And I just want to say thank you, commissioners, council members, and the public for allowing us to do this. And I truly believe that the director and I, and we'll go through this a little bit at the end of the call, kind of how we're, what our plans are. And we explained some of that last meeting. But we, there needs to be a motion by a commissioner that states is that, the motion would be that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. Any planning rules that are in conflict with the governor's order are hereby temporarily suspended until the governor's order is no longer in effect. And so we'll need a commissioner to make that motion so that we can hold this meeting telephonically, by teleconference. And if you would raise your hands, and Council Lady Murphy.
So.
Oh, Commissioner Lawson moves the motion. Council Lady Murphy, you want a second?
I will second.
Perfect. Thank you, commissioners and council lady. It's a proper motion and second, any discussion? If you would raise your icon hand or verbally state you would like to discuss. Seeing no other discussion, we'll vote on this measure by roll call. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes, and we will hold the meeting telephonically. And now we are on to the adoption of the agenda. And commissioners, the agenda was sent out to you prior and posted on Planning Commission website. And so we'll need a motion to approve the agenda, which is in front of you. Is there a motion? Raise your icon hand, or Commissioner Lawson, you want to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Excellent. Proper motion, and the vice chair is on. So this, she, please add her to the roll call vice chair. Can you say present? And would you like to second the motion? Let's see if she's, here we go. Commissioner Farr.
Faye, my unmute was not working. I'm here.
All right.
And I would be happy to second that motion.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for joining us. Proper motion, proper second to adopt the agenda. Any other discussion? If you'll raise your icon hand or verbally state you would like to discuss. Seeing no other discussion, we will go to roll call vote to approve the agenda. And Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Eyes have it, and the agenda is adopted. We are on to item D, which is the approval of the September 10th, 2020 minutes. And that was also sent to you and posted on Planning Commission website. And so we will need a motion to adopt the minutes. And Vice Chair, you want to make the motion?
I move approval.
Excellent. It's a proper motion. And Commissioner Sims, you want a second?
I'll second it.
That's a proper motion and second, any other discussion? If you would raise your icon hand or verbally state you would like to discuss. And seeing none, we will go into a roll call vote to approve the minutes. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Eyes have it, and the minutes are approved. So now, we are going to do something a little bit different than our normal agenda order. And we have a presentation. So item E on your agenda is strictly an informational presentation. And I want to welcome Faye Massimo, who is the mayor's senior advisor for transportation and infrastructure. And she will be presenting this informational plan on the draft transportation plan. And Director, is there anything else you want to say before we hear the presentation?
Well, I would just note that we're grateful to Mr. Massimo's dedication and hard work towards the transportation plan. She came to Nashville from Atlanta and brings a wealth of expertise to our city. And it's been a wonderful partnership with her to learn about her work and goals. And as all the commissioners know, mobility is so key to land use planning, and they're really inextricably linked. And so my understanding is she is not planning on giving a PowerPoint presentation, but rather a verbal presentation, and then is open to entertaining questions or comments from the commission if you have any to offer. So with that, I would just hand it over.
All right, excellent. Let's hand it over. And in your record, this, and the report, the plan was sent out to the commissioners prior to this as well. So let's hand it over to Mr. Massimo. We appreciate you being on the line. Welcome.
Oh, well, thank you all so much for the opportunity to be here today. Couple of things I'd like to say before we get started on the presentation itself. First, I want to thank Lucy and the staff at Planning. This effort has truly been a team effort of Metro with the Planning Department, the Department of Public Works, Parks and Rec, WEGO, and others, our regional and state partners. It's really been an extraordinary effort to put this together and truly collaborative. And I think that the results reflect all of the investment from so many who have made that. And like I said, we simply could not have done this without Lucy and other members of her staff, Marty Sewell, I think, and his team in particular. So I want to be sure to recognize them and to thank you all for that teamwork and that partnership. Lucy, I think, sent out to you earlier today an updated version. What you, what you really have of the plan right now is the project recommendations. In next week, there will be a, the actual plan document. We anticipate that next week it's going to go out for public comment and will be hosted on the website with some other supporting materials and a link back to a survey on the Metro Hub so that a broad range of public input from all across Metro can be received on the recommendations from all of the listening that we've been doing over the last 11 months. So with that, I'll get directly into the overview of this. And then, as the chairman said, glad to answer any comments or questions that you may have. You likely recall that at the beginning, about 11 months ago, a year ago now, at the beginning of the mayor's, or actually during his campaign, he committed to a new people-first transportation plan during his first year. And we have advanced in accomplishing that in spite of the challenges that Metro has faced in the past month. Prior to limitations on in-person meetings, we started this effort off by meeting with each of the 40 council members individually. One of the things that we had certainly heard was that previous efforts that perhaps our council members had not felt that they had an opportunity to have input and have a seat at the table at the very beginning. And we wanted to be sure that that was where we started. So we met with our 40 council members first. And then we also engaged in numerous stakeholder group meetings. There were about two dozen. And we, in this round that we are in the midst of now, there's even more. There's about two and a half or so of those that are ongoing now. We also engaged in 11 community listening sessions. And I hope some of you had an opportunity to participate in those. There was an exercise that we did. We went to those meetings and we approached it with the perspective, we did not come in at all and say, we've got a plan, or here's what we think, what do you think? We just simply engaged the participants by saying, what do you think? And we offered some structured exercises and activities to engage that particular question. One of those was that every participant was given, and this was able, in an online version too, were able to take $20 of, and if it were the in-person meetings, of course, it was play money. And they had nine different project types, whether that's transit, sidewalks, traffic management, bikeways, greenways, and so forth. But nine different project types, and they had to determine how would they spend their $20. It was a really interesting exercise. It was certainly one of the most popular ones, for sure. But people had to be put in the same position that decision makers in our community are put in all the time with a finite amount of money and a lot of different needs, and how do you try to prioritize amongst all of those? The interesting thing about this was we, so we held 11 community listening sessions all across Metro Nashville, like had over two dozen stakeholder meetings that represented groups that had all kinds of different perspectives, whether that was a business community group, or Walk by Nashville, or a group that represented neighborhoods, or a group that was concerned about particular immigrant populations, or those with disabilities in our community and so forth. So lots of different perspectives represented. And what was really remarkable about all of this, these months of listening sessions and effort, was how much alignment there was of the prioritization effort. And across Metro Nashville, there was strong alignment behind transit and sidewalks and state of good repair as high, high priorities, along with, obviously, good, strong investments that we still made recommendations for in this plan around all of those other components that truly make up a multimodal system. And that is one thing that is really different, we think, about this plan, is it very much is focused at a system level of performance. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. And so we did all of that, that activity, had those results that I just described. And we also looked back to the mayor's focus areas around upgrading the bus system, tackling traffic, and modernizing our traffic management system, neighborhood infrastructure, which is so important, sidewalks, bikeways, greenways, traffic calming, improving safety. And back in January, the mayor made a commitment to us becoming a Vision Zero City. And for those who are not familiar with that, that's a, it's a national, international program of communities that have come together and made a commitment to reducing their traffic fatalities of all kinds to zero. And so we made that commitment and then immediately began the work of preparing the necessary procurements and such that would allow us to produce a Vision Zero action plan, which is the first step in a Vision Zero City, to be able to help define how we actually will do that, the projects, the policies, programs, and so forth. So we just recently completed that procurement and the selection and are actively engaged in getting that work started now. And then a conversation around, right now, aside and apart from WEGO and the transit activities, and then Greenway thing in the Parks and Rec Department, the other things that you think of as a transportation function, whether that's roads, bridges, traffic signals, the right-of-way administration, ADA compliance, all those kinds of things are spread across multiple departments, at least four, in metro government. And so the discussion around creation of a Nashville Department of Transportation that will enable us to not create a new bureaucracy, but to bring those functions together in a cohesive, focused way that would be efficient, effective, and accountable, is one that we also have underway as a companion effort to the plan. When we were out in the community and talking to all of the groups that I mentioned earlier, there were two other pieces that we heard a lot of conversation around. One was equity, which is a top-of-mind conversation for, I think, every city in America right now, as well as affordable housing. On equity, we know that most transportation plans and communities have goals for equity, and those are obviously very important. We wanted to do something even more intentional beyond just having our goal and our aspirations around the performance of equity for this system and plan that we're bringing forward. We also wanted to make sure that we literally are building all kinds of facets of equity as appropriate into every project. That is literally in the design and implementation, the delivery process of the project. So we developed a tool called Equity in Design that was in, I think, the original package of information that Lucy shared with you. And it, we are very excited about the opportunity that it has. That is, we are very intentional with each and every project to build in those, look at all those 17 facets of equity that we've identified right now, to think about those thoughtfully in the context of the development, design, and delivery of those projects, then how those projects each make an equity value contribution to the community that builds a system that will inherently be more, will have equity at its heart. And so we're excited about that. On the affordable housing side, we went back to the Affordable Housing Task Force work that was done in 2018. And we looked at both the funding recommendations that are in that, consulted with former mayor Bill Purcell, who led that effort, as well as, of course, chairs of the Housing Authority now, and with Hannah Davis at the Barnes Fund, and talked about a meaningful affordable housing component or recommendation activity with regard to this plan. And we came to a couple of different parts of that. The first is a recommendation with several of the major transit corridor projects that are recommended in the plan. One is Murphy's Borough Pike, and the other is on Clarksville Pike. So we actually made the budgets for those projects, not only reflect the cost of the transit project as it's estimated right now itself, but also we included the same funding recommendation from the Affordable Housing Task Force work for an affordable housing component of those particular projects. We also committed to working with those two groups as they are about the business of updating an affordable housing inventory for Metro, looking at challenges and opportunities and identifying those so that data-driven activities can be performed around that. And we agreed that we are continuing, as we should with all of these things, working together with these relevant partners to make sure that the transportation plan, as it moves forward into implementation, will support those activities and make sure that transportation infrastructure that supports other measures of affordable housing that comes forward from those groups will be supported. The next thing that we did was we wanted to make sure that, we, one of the other criticisms that we've heard of past efforts is that it really didn't reach all of Metro Nashville, or there were parts of the community that felt like they'd been left out of the investments or in a significant way. So we asked the Planning Department, this is one of those partnership, I mentioned earlier, some of the key activities that have been supported in the development of this plan. We asked the Planning Department to do a GIS analysis for us and to look at all of the recommendations that are in the plan. And I'll stop here just for a minute and mention that in the plan document that you got today, there are, and this will be the plan that gets posted for public comment, the plan project recommendations, is we have now included an investment in the Music City Star. The reason that that was originally not included in the plan is we were still working with WEGO in terms of what was an appropriate level of investment, what would give us real return, what would give real benefits to riders and so forth. Multiple council members and stakeholder groups have brought that up, obviously a very prized part of our overall network. And so there is a project in there for the Music City Star. And in addition to that, we have identified that there are many things that we are looking at with regard, keep in mind, we're very focused on system-level performance, whether that's curbside infrastructure management, transit prioritization, some of the key corridor efforts and so forth, that without us resolving how we look at the downtown neighborhood traffic management, our traffic study as a project, will not, we will not be able to achieve the goals that we have for that. So we've gone back and defined a project to do just that. And we, it'll be a project that we would be looking for some funding partnerships to advance really early on so that we get that done. And it helps guide some of our efforts around traffic management, around the transit prioritization, around curbside infrastructure management, and so forth. So we think that those were two very important additions that needed to be included on the project list prior to this going out for public outreach. But we asked the Planning Department to do an assessment of all the projects that are in the plan, a GIS analysis for us, and to tell us how well had we done, truth us, fact-check us, how well had we done in reaching all of Metro. So this included bridges, culverts, sidewalks that are in the priority sidewalk network, bikeways that are in the priority bikeway network, the Better Bus Network recommendation, which you also received a detailed document explaining, which touches nearly every route in the WEGO system with either upgrades to the service, upgrade to the service hours, and so forth. And then traffic calming requests, which we know are very important in our neighborhoods. So there were, at the time that we were doing this analysis, 606 requests for traffic calming that addressed 320 miles of road segments throughout Metro. Additionally, there are specific projects in the plan that Jefferson Street Cap that is proposed, and then the Murphy's Borough, Clarksville, Charlotte, and Gallatin corridors. Two of those are innovation corridors. And I should particularly call out the reason that Charlotte is in there and the innovation corridor recommendations in there build upon a study that was done, excuse me, a study done by the Planning Department in 2018 that was a study of the Charlotte Avenue corridor. It dealt with a specific part of the Charlotte Avenue corridor, but the length of the corridor and the consideration of what we would do in that corridor built upon recommendations from a planning study. We tried to do that with many of the projects that are in this plan is to be sure that we were leveraging existing efforts that had been done by, whether that was WEGO or the Planning Department or the Civic Design Center and so forth. We tried to make sure that we thoughtfully considered all of that, both sweat equity and investment that had been made in studies recently that had held great value for this plan. So again, asked the Planning Department to do a GIS analysis and look and tell us how well had we done in reaching the population, the residents of Metro Nashville, and how well had we done in reaching the employment and the job locations in Metro Nashville. And what we learned was that 92% of the population and 94% of the employment would be within a half a mile of an investment. While we are still working to do even better, those are rather remarkable numbers. And we are very pleased that our intentional aim from the beginning of this planning effort to make sure that we were indeed reaching and thinking about and looking at and addressing needs all across Metro Nashville was largely achieved. So the question, the natural question that comes up next is, well, okay, this is great, but where's the money? And so when we started this plan 11 months ago, of course, we were aimed towards a plan that could be easily considered under a dedicated funding source. That is, that would be optimum. And I know that Lucy mentioned a little bit of my background. I've worked on seven different dedicated funding source infrastructure programs, everything from the actual campaign that preceded them all the way through operations and maintenance over the course of my career, and programs that are of a comparable size to the one that we're proposing here. But our intention was to bring something forward that could be considered for just that kind of an effort, because that is the optimum way to do big infrastructure programs. So a referendum bond or something like that. Of course, we have, we have really had some remarkable times in Metro Nashville, as have many other communities. And between the tornado and the pandemic and the resulting economic impacts and the uncertainty that people feel right now, we wanted to be respectful of that. And that's important. And we, so a few months back, we really backed up and said, let's look at this carefully and let's think about, if a dedicated funding source is not the right way to approach plan implementation right now in the near term, and we know how important that the cities around America that are going to emerge from COVID most strongly are those that are going to continue to make progress, how do we do that? And so we worked as a team, brought in some expertise, some of the best in the country in terms of transportation, infrastructure, financial strategy work. And we looked at 135 different funding strategies that are, that are used by many communities across the country. And we narrowed that down to 72 distinctive funding sources, federal, state, local, public, private, and then value capture that are, would be enabled under Tennessee state law, under Metro Code, or had a realistic, were under some conversation, for example, at GNRC and the regional level, and had some real opportunity to develop over the 10, 15-year term of this plan. And we took all those and matched them back to the projects. And then we said, okay, if we're going to propose an opportunistic funding strategy, which is what we're calling this for this plan, then we've got to demonstrate that we're not just talk. This is not just a plan. It's a true system, and we're going to be actionable about it. And so there are two projects on the transit side. One is the Green Hill Station, the other is the North Nashville Station Improvement. And then on the traffic side, some, it's both a transit and a traffic management safety improvement on a particular. a traffic management safety improvement on a particular section of Charlotte, along with, and this is what I think is really frankly, one of the most important projects in all the plans, the funding for our Traffic Operations Center, that would become the nerve center for an overall modernization of traffic management throughout every part of Metro Nashville. Super important because our existing system is really quite antiquated. So very excited about these recommendations. But this opportunistic funding strategy, we thought with them, we really wanted to make sure that we made it real for how it could genuinely advance the plan. So where we are now is we are next, hopefully in the next week or so, we will be the plan itself, and I mean the full plan document with all the text, the history, the description of where we've been, where we are, where we're going, what you would traditionally think of more as a plan document, but with all of the pieces, component pieces that you've seen inserted in various parts, including these plan recommendations, will be brought forward for the public to consider and to think about. And we will be putting that up on the website, along with some supplemental information, and then a link back to a survey on the hub that anyone in the community can take. We're going to continue to be doing these stakeholder events across Metro Nashville with different groups and working with specific strategies for communities and areas that might be impacted by digital divide to overcome that. And then with the hope that at the conclusion of all that and with the fully edited, what will become then the final plan, we would have the opportunity to bring this back for our council to consider for approval, an action to approve or adopt it. And so why is that important when there's really not a dedicated funding source at this point? There's two reasons. The first is that when you're pursuing these opportunistic funding strategies, whether that's federal, state, other types of grants, as an example, those are, they look at us as an investment and they are investors. And what do investors want to see? They want to know that we support what we're asking for. And so oftentimes you will be asked the question, does this project come from a plan that's been approved by the local jurisdiction? It's a part of being competitive for those opportunities. And then secondly, and I think this is the more important, is that for while we have done projects, good projects, but done projects that are, you know, something here, something there, something else over here, and the notion that even though we will be pursuing this with opportunistic funding, so individual implementation versus program implementation, at least for the near term, the hope would be, the notion is that we still have described for this, this is a system plan. So we know that we'll reach 92% of the population, 94% of the employment, reduce 80% of the sidewalk backlog and other performance metrics that we have, that we baked into that overall system. So even though we're be implementing, you know, individually, that system-level performance is still achieved. It's all meant to perform together. You know, this has been, as I said, this has been a really interesting time to be doing this kind of work. But I also think it couldn't be a more important time to be doing exactly this kind of work to make sure that we remain, you know, the vibrant and extraordinary Nashville that we are. So I appreciate the time to bring this forward to you. I'll make one last comment, is that of course, the hope is, I've mentioned this opportunistic funding strategy, but our hope will be that in a few years, as we move into post-COVID recovery times or into a COVID recovery status, that there will be opportunities for the community's confidence, our residents, our businesses and our leadership's confidence to have returned in a measure that would enable us to consider this in its original intent of some sort of a dedicated funding source, whatever might be considered appropriate at whatever time it is considered appropriate. So with that, I will stop and thank you all again for your time today. And I appreciate any comments or questions that you may have to offer.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Great presentation. And thank you for all of your hard work, as the director said. And I really appreciate our staff team and the mayor's team and transportation plant, other transportation planners working on this plan. So thank you very much. Now we're going to open it up for questions. And so instead of going to each commission member, how about we just try to, if you have questions or want to make a comment, if you'll try to raise your icon hand and see if there are any questions or if you verbally want... Vice Chair, do you have any... Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to say how excited I am to hear about the connection with the equity focus and the affordable housing. And I know that especially on the affordable housing side, funding is also a big unknown, but really appreciate that this is the way we're thinking about our transit planning long-term. And hopefully, as we continue to build out this framework, you know, more opportunistic funding sources will become available on the affordable housing side as well. But I really appreciate that focus. That really stands out to me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Council Lady Murphy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. And I have had the ability as a councilwoman to see this or talk through this plan already with Fay. And I would like to publicly thank her and her staff for acknowledging now that we do have commuter rail in Davidson County, because that had been left out. And I know that that had gotten a lot of negative feedback from council members and community members. But what I'm not seeing and what I am not hearing is many things that was requested by several council members, including not just countywide, but I'll speak to some of us who represent the western portion of Davidson County. We have a new high school being built and I'm not seeing any transit going out there. We have hospitals that are not being connected via transit still. I'm still not seeing true lists. And so I'm a little worried that what we were given today as planning commissioners as a document, if that's going to the public next week, I guess they are just, Fay's staff and her team are going to be working 24/7 to add in a lot of details that no one has seen yet. And that concerns me. So I look forward to seeing what the feedback is, but I'm very concerned that things that have been expressed to the team and to the administration are not being reflected in what we were sent today. And I'm happy to follow that conversation up early next week with that team. But I know that there is still a lot more work to do. And I think we need to circle back on a lot of those, the situations and the corridors that are being left out.
Thank you, Council Lady.
I wanted to respond just a little bit. Council Member, thank you so much for those comments. On the Better Bus side, I believe that there's some of the more detail of the transit is reflected there. And we're more than happy for Steve and I to sit down and talk through that with you in more detail. In terms of the Charlotte Avenue corridor in particular, we, I think there are a couple of corridors that you made specific comment in our meeting with you about making sure that the limits of the improvements were extended into certain areas that where you felt that there had been growth and we wanted to be sure we captured that. And in the mapping that you will actually see in the plan, that has been done in addition, and the project description about. And then in addition to that, on Charlotte Avenue, similarly to what I mentioned earlier, not Charlotte, excuse me, West End Avenue, on Charlotte, the Charlotte Avenue corridor improvements that we suggested really built off of that previous planning study that was done there. And what we wanted to do was to work with the planning department. As a matter of fact, I'd already reached out to Lucy, but we just, our schedules have not permitted an opportunity for us to talk about that in more detail, about what kind of a corridor study improvement we could, not necessarily for the plan, but in the planning work program, could be contemplated for West End that would give us that same opportunity to program from that. So I did want you to understand that we really had listened to your comments and had built what we thought were responsive places into that. But appreciate so much your expressing those comments and an opportunity for us to continue to discuss.
Thank you. Great discussion. Excellent discussion. Any more discussion or questions from commission members? If you'll raise your hand or verbally state, we have Commissioner Sims.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Fay. We're so excited you're here in Nashville. We've needed you. I served with Bill Purcell on the task force before you got here. And one of our biggest concerns during that time was how we were going to react with transportation to all the new red developments going on. Because in most of those developments, we're growing as, sometimes as small as tenfold, sometimes as much as fifteenfold. And so we're trying to figure out, and I live in one of those places where the street went right down the middle and it is absolutely a symbol of not having equity. And I wondered how this is getting addressed in your pledge and I think your commitment to do something about equity.
Yeah, I think, so there's sort of two pieces to the equity part. The first, of course, is to have the aspirational goals. There's so many projects in this plan that have a really obvious equity value to them or the sort of equity goal to them, whether it's the Vision Zero component, the Jefferson Street component, sort of knitting the communities there back together, the sidewalk, this huge investment in sidewalks that make, that give access and have a strong equity component to them as well. So there's so many different project types or the buckets of projects in here that do exactly that. And then this equity lens that we described earlier is very much, it is a design feature, not a goal feature, and it is very much driving at that project level. But I think for ones that you have particular, for areas that you have particular concerns about, that's one of those ones that needs to be a part of that ongoing conversation that I mentioned earlier and that commitment that we have with both the Barnes Fund and the Housing Authority to continue to figure out, how can this transportation plan? And that's just going to be a roll up our sleeves, ongoing. It's not like a one-time solve check for that. That's the hard work of all the time, making sure that we're pairing our transportation and our infrastructure to the kinds of development activities that are occurring in the community, along with an eye towards how is that impacting the equity for everyone in Metro Nashville. So I appreciate very much you bringing that up. And for the particular areas that you're mentioning, we're ready to roll up our sleeves and work on those.
And I appreciate that. I think part of what concerns me is this is going to be so dependent on the public's opinion. And so much of the public is really aware now of our equity issues. And so I really encourage you to maybe make those a little more explicit. But again, welcome, and we're so glad you're here.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Commissioners, thank you. Commissioner Sims, any other Commissioners? And before we move on to the next item, I just want to say thank you to Fay for joining us. Many of you may or may not know this about me, but transportation is a true passion for me. I used to work at TDOT and also did a, worked at the Public Transportation Association. And so transit and transportation issues are very important to me. And I've had many discussions with the director about mobility. And so I think this is great discussion. I look forward to hearing more about it. And I know the council members, it is on the top of their minds, because as a former council member, I used to get calls all the time on both public transit and just mobility issues, sidewalks, all that kind of thing. And any other Commissioners? I want to make sure we get everybody.
Chairman, one other thing I would add to that is we really had a very intentional focus too. And I hope that that shows, not only to all those things I've described to you today, but to what the mayor called a right-sized program, which we didn't have a particular number in mind. But what we tried to do was to make sure that this was a program that we could demonstrate and we knew would make a big impact, would be a game changer for Metro Nashville in terms of its implementation impact. And at the same time, also, you could get your arms around it. You could understand what it would do, you know, in your particular area or in an area you might be concerned about in Metro Nashville. You could understand the difference it was going to make, and you could get your arms around it and understand the projects. And it didn't feel like you couldn't, you know, it was just too big or not understandable or whatever. And we had a very specific game to make sure that we, driven by performance, but approachable and understandable as well. And I hope that that's a part of what comes across in your review of it.
Thank you very much. And I want to appreciate, I appreciate you and working with our staff team. So thank you very much for joining us today.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Now we'll move on to, seeing no other discussion, we will move on to Item F, which is the recognition of the council members. And there are several council members on the line. And we go by, as soon as y'all join us, we try to go in order of you guys joining us. And so I first saw Councilman Sean Parker. You want to, and you don't have to speak now, you can speak during the item, just let us know. That would be great. So Councilman Parker, are you?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Chair. I've got four items. And thank you, Fay, for being here. Thank you, Fay Damasimo, for being here to talk over the transit plan with us. I've got four items on the agenda. I believe that three of them are on consent. Number 11, the Diggerson North Study. I just wanted to note that I was super impressed with the community engagement around this study pre-COVID. And wanted to thank Anna Greider for what a great job they did with that and all the other staffers who worked on it. The plan has, you know, the areas of focus are outside of District 5. So, you know, I'll defer to my colleagues, Van Rees, Tooms and Gamble largely, but I am supportive from what I've seen. Item 16 is 215 Cleveland Street. We've had two community meetings around this one. I'm supportive of this project. Most of the community's concerns have been addressed in the process. And I really appreciate the responsiveness of the applicants to those. There's sort of a continuing discussion about, you know, having some aesthetic controls about, you know, facade and whatnot. And we might introduce that at the council level. You know, we don't want to do anything that's overly burdensome to the applicants and the builders. But we are going to kind of explore that at the council level. But I think from the land use piece, I think folks in the community are pretty happy with it. Item 18 is a HUD cancellation on a very small piece of property. I received an email from a constituent asking, I was attached to it, asking for this to be removed from consent. Is that the case, that this was removed from consent?
Hi, Councilman Parker. This is Lisa. Yes, the item was moved from consent and will be automatically deferred to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. And lastly, we've got Item 20, which is a rezoning at 813 Lishy from the Dadoo SP to R6A. And, you know, I believe from a pure land use perspective, this makes sense to be on consent. I am going to ask the applicant, Frankie Mann, I believe, to attend a McFerran Park Neighborhood Association meeting to talk with neighbors about this application prior to introducing the bill at council. But as far as the piece tonight, I think I'm fine with Number 20 staying on consent. So again, Commissioners, I appreciate your time letting me speak and for all y'all being here this evening.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you joining us. I saw Council Lady Porterfield. Council Lady Porterfield, you're recognized. Let me see, she's still on mute. Council Lady Porterfield? You're still on mute?
I know that the Council Lady had another...
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, my apologies. I was having a little bit of a hard time. I'm muting. Thank you so much for acknowledging. Thank you so much for acknowledging me. Though there are two District 29 items on the agenda today. One is being deferred into October, so I don't need to speak on that, correct? I just want to make sure that's correct. That's the final plat for 2019 S-234-001.
Hi, Councilmember. This is Lisa. Yes, that item is being deferred.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. The other item, which is 2020Z-128PR-001, which was formerly 2020SP-015-001, is for a rezoning request to go to IWD for a property located on Cowlville Pike. I want to thank the developer for deferring this for such a long time. But I've spoken with him on several different occasions, and he has been gracious with holding off because he knew my desire to have community meetings and to discuss rezonings with our community prior to moving forward. So he did, he's been deferring this since March, and I really do appreciate that. Prior to COVID, we had several community meetings. And on three separate occasions, we discussed the Cowlville Pike area. There was some type of, whether that was, there was something coming before the planning commission, whether that was a rezoning or a variance request in one instance. But we've discussed the Cowlville Pike area on several different occasions, and the community has been very vocal, the residents in that area, which that property borders District 13, and our District 13 neighbors, as well as our District 29 neighbors, have all been vocal in wanting that area to stay IWD or wanting those properties to be IWD, primarily due to the proximity to the airport and not really wanting that to be a residential area or a highly residential area. So our community has traditionally been in support of this type of development. At this point, I've not received anything from anyone in the community saying that they're in opposition. I have received a few letters of support. I will still have a community meeting prior to bringing this to council, just so we can make sure that everyone understands this particular plan and to make sure that we address any questions that the community may have. But again, traditionally, the community has been supportive of IWD on Cowlville Pike. And I'm thankful that the developer has really been flexible with trying to work with us to make sure that community concerns are addressed. The one question that the community had with the previous development, a little bit before I was elected in 2019, it was the property that, another one of their properties that had a small amount of frontage on net shelton. And for that particular parcel, we split the zoning to make sure that there would not be any 18-wheelers accessing net shelton from the property. I know in this legislation, we're not looking at splitting the zone, and we're looking at the whole parcel being IWD. But it is put in the restrictions to make sure that they can't access net shelton at all. And I know that their frontage will be on the back end of already developed property, so the access point would not be net shelton. But for the purpose of anyone who may be listening in in our community, could you all just explain why that is, why this option is the better option and why we're not splitting it in the way that we did last time? And that can either be explained now or when the item comes up this evening.
Lisa, you, is this item being heard tonight?
Yes, yes, Chairman. It will be. It will be presented on the agenda later tonight.
Okay, so Councilwoman, we should probably go over that during the public hearing. And that way, all that stuff will come out. And then, you know, you made your comment now, and you can also, you know, talk about that when the item comes up tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I will be joining you guys later this evening. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman. We appreciate you being on the call. Next is Councilwoman Van Rees.
Good evening. Thank you again, everyone, for your service to our beautiful city. I wanted to just chime in, kind of following up Mr. Parker's comments in regard to Item Number 11 on the Dickerson North project and a real genuine gratitude towards Anna Greider and the team. I think that not just pre-COVID, the amazing community involvement that we were able to have, but also post, the way that the community was actively engaged through different digital means, as well as telephonically, to get feedback from up and down the corridor was just a beautiful case study on how it's supposed to work. I wanted to particularly thank the entire team for including the skyline area north of Bradley Parkway. It's really easy for planners to see a major intersection like that and stop a plan as opposed to hopping over it. And with all the activities happening in the Skyline Commons area and Councilmember Gamble's district, as well as in Skyline Hospital area and Skyline Ridge Drive, it was extremely important to be able to kind of see that in full context. That decision early on really spoke well to the District Eight folks coming up and down from Broadmoor and Hart and all alike as well, to be able to kind of see that the city is holding true to its promise that planning and prosperity needs to make its way to the county line. And so I just wanted to thank everybody for their involvement in this. And I'm extremely proud of District Eight for doing their part and participating. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next is Councilwoman Stiles.
Hello. Thank you so very much, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for your work. Fay, as well. It was great to hear the plan again. I'm just here, I have one item on consent. It's Number 17, the Hobson Townhomes. I just wanted to lend my support.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Councilwoman Hager.
There you go. How are y'all doing today?
Doing great. Thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you all for your service. I appreciate it very much. I've got Number 22 on the agenda. If y'all recall, this was the item that it was a area AR2A to CS for a convenience market. And there was a lot of opposition to it due to the fact there was a driving range there for golfers. And as I told y'all at the end, I mentioned that they'll still have almost 10 acres there of floodplain that they could possibly work with the tenant that is leasing that property now to keep that driving range open. I think most of you should have a letter by now indicating that they have met with the tenant. There is a lease still on the property for two or three years, as I recall. So to that end, they're going to try to work around the driving range, which I think that was the biggest opposition to that project. So the driving range can stay there and continue to function on the floodplain portion of the property. You'll also note that the petitions that were signed and filled out were predominantly all people from District 12, not District 11, even though I do border District 12 area. And most of the people on the petition did not live within 1,000, 1,500 feet of this particular property. So as far as objections from my particular district, I may have one or two, but they lived about a half a mile away. The other objections to the property were, of course, they had some objections about the traffic, which I think they've gotten that worked out, and the number of convenience stores that are in that area. But I took the position that the biggest impediment to this rezoning from people in District 12, which is Councilwoman Evans' district, was they wanted the driving range to remain. It appears, based on the information I have now, that they're going to work with this tenant, and they have to, they have to work with him due to the lease agreement that's still on the property. And they will work to that end to keep the driving range there. Or if he does not want to do that, then it'd be used for some other type of recreational activity. So I'll leave it up to y'all, but I think that this was a good compromise that the owners and the developers worked out with the driving range tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Councilman O'Connell, I saw you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to bring to your attention two of the items on the agenda that I support tonight. One is Item 21, which is the urban zoning overlay expansion along the Murfreesboro Pike corridor. This is a project that Councilmember Sledge initiated. And basically, the council office asked if I wanted to participate because it really does make a lot more sense to cover, frankly, both sides of Murfreesboro, which is the dividing line between our districts. You know, this is a corridor that includes a major college in the area, Trevecca, a new police headquarters, several interesting Nashville assets, including the Lane Motor Museum. And I've spoken to a number of property owners on the District 19 side who, you know, I think had some basic questions about this. But planning staff and the council office, planning liaisons and helpfully shared, you know, sort of a one-page run this. And I think this is a good target for an urbanizing area, given the assets there. And I think the urban zoning overlay expansion makes a lot of sense when we look at the map. So I would encourage Commissioners to support that project. The other item is Item 25, which is the Marathon Village Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. This is an idea that Barry Walker, who has kind of presided over the Renaissance to this area with the primary Marathon building and the smaller one across the street, approached me about a couple of years ago with really sort of what amounts to a neighborhood vision. And, you know, he's got a couple of vacant lots over there as well. This is one of the last remaining sort of industrial brick neighborhoods that if you walk through that building, you will see the built history frequently on display with manufacturing equipment from that era. We're not going to have, I think, full neighborhood consensus on this. I have continued to work at the encouragement of the commission when you all first considered the item several months ago with property owners, business owners out there, the largest of which, who was still chewing on it, is Nelson's Greenbrier Distillery, which is planning a pretty significant expansion. I'm pleased to report that as our discussions continue, they are looking to basically expand, very consistent with the terms of the overlay that is proposed. That does not necessarily indicate their support of the overlay, but I think my commitment to them is if the overlay passes, we're going to work just on every scenario that they encounter to make sure that they can expand. It's a, you know, an amazing local story. In fact, the history of their brand is absolutely consistent with the overall spirit of what is happening in Marathon. And I know that the property in question, again, it is not likely to support this overlay consideration. But I think, considering the closeness to downtown, the proximity to a major rail line, and the nature of the built environment in that area, which could actually become the home to future buildings through relocations, which is something that has been considered, this is an overlay very well worth your consideration. I do hope you will support it. And that's all I've got. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Councilwoman Tooms.
Hello. Thank you, Commissioners. I have five items on the agenda. Three are deferred. Number 11, some of my colleagues have spoken on it. That's the Dickerson North Corridor study. Again, kudos to Anna Greider and her involvement of the community. She attended one of my virtual community meetings for District Two. The community is supportive of the study. I really like that, that the community involvement and that the community has a say in how development comes to their neighborhoods and, you know, where they live and work. So I'm very supportive of that study. Number 24 is 1819 River Drive. I know that the request to go from RS10, R8 was, well, the recommendation is disapproval, and there's a recommendation to approve the R10. I haven't heard anything from the developers, so I assume that's not as big of an issue, but I wanted to hear the conversation around that recommendation. There was a community meeting for this particular project, and the community was supportive of it, so I am as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We appreciate it. Councilwoman Roberts. I don't, I don't see Councilwoman Roberts anymore. Lisa, did she drop off the call?
Hi, Chairman. I'm scrolling. Yes, it looks like she did drop off the call.
All right, let's double check if she's signed up as a... Nope, she's not on the other list. Okay. So I don't see Councilwoman Roberts anymore, and if she joins, we'll recognize her. Councilwoman Hauser, I saw. I saw Councilwoman Hauser, but now...
Chairman, it looks like, it looks like Councilmember Hauser has also left the call.
Okay. Well, and if the council member joins up with us, we'll, we will get them back. We'll recognize them during their items. So I don't see any other council members. So I want to remind everybody, if you'll please mute the line. If you're not speaking, it will help us with feedback. Next, we have Item G, which is Items for Deferral/Withdrawal. Lisa, you're recognized.
Hi, Chairman. We have the following items for deferral or withdrawal. Item Number 1 on page four of your agenda, 2020SP-037001, 1414 Third Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 22 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 2, 2020SP-041001, 3048 Lebanon Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 3 on page 5 of your agenda, 2019S-086001, to resubdivision of the John B. Cowden property. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 4, 2019S-234001, the Doral Property Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 5, 2020S-113001, resub of Dixie Pure Food Company Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 6, 2020S-145001, the Bordeaux Agrahood. Staff recommendation is to defer to the November 12 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 7, 2020Z-093PR001, staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item Number 8, 2020Z-096PR001, on page 6 of your agenda. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item Number 9, 2020Z-108PR001, staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 10, 2020DTC-041001, the Lord and Liberty Hotel. Item number 10, 2020 DTC 041001, the Lord and Liberty Hotel. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission Meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number 13, 2011 SP 009008, One City Amendment 3. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission Meeting. On page eight of your agenda, number 18, 2003 P 015004, Sam Levy Homes PUD Cancellation. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission Meeting. On page nine of your agenda, item number 23, 2020 Z 102PR001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission Meeting. And under Other Business, item number 28, Appointments to the 31st Avenue and Long Boulevard UDO DRC. Staff recommendation is to defer to the October 8 Planning Commission Meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. So Commissioners, let's make sure we get this list correct. I'll go slow, and Lisa, let me know if these are all correct items. The items for deferral or withdrawal are Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 13, 18, 23, and 28. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So Commissioners, you've heard those items for deferral or withdrawal. We will need a motion, so if you'll, Vice Chair, or do you want to make a motion?
Motion to accept the items for deferral or withdrawal.
Thank you. Proper motion. And Commissioner Tibbs, you want to make a second?
Second.
So it's a proper motion, and second, any discussion on the deferral motion? If you'll raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to speak. And seeing no other discussion, it's time for a roll call. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Eyes have it, and the deferral, these items are deferred. So now we're on to Item H, which is the consent agenda. Lisa?
The following items are on the consent agenda. Hold on first. As information to our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. Item number 11 on page six of your agenda, 2020 CP 005002. It's the East Nashville and Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan Amendment. It's a request to amend the East Nashville and Parkwood Union Hill Community Plans to adopt the Dickerson North Corridor Study on various properties located along Dickerson Pike, to amend the adopted major and collector street plan designation for various streets, and to amend the walk-in bike plan. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 12, 2020 Z 011TX001. It's a request for an ordinance to amend Title 17 of the Metro Code pertaining to dumpsters and other trash receptacles. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page seven of your agenda, item 14, 2020 SP 029001, 1604 Willis Street SP. It's a request to rezone from RS 5 to SP for property located on Willis Street to permit a maximum of two detached residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 15, 2020 SP 038001, Cedars of Kane Ridge. It's a request to rezone from AR 2A to SP for properties located on Pettis Road to permit 136 detached single-family and detached single-family units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 16, 2020 SP 040001, 215 Cleveland Street. It's a request to rezone from SP to SP for property located at 215 Cleveland Street to permit all uses permitted under our M15A NS zoning. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 17, 2020 S 14001, Hobson Pike Townhomes. It's a request for concept plan approval to create two lots and dedicate right-of-way on property located on Hobson Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page eight of your agenda, item number 19, 2020 Z 109PR001. It's a request to rezone from IWD to MUG, zoning for property located on Athens Way. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 20, 2020 Z 104PR001. It's a request to rezone from SP to R6A for property located on Lishy Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. And on page nine, under Other Business, item number 27, Employee Contract Renewal for Jason Swagger, and item number 32, to accept the director's report.
Thank you, Lisa. Commissioners, the consent agenda's items are Items 11, 12, 16, 17, 19, 20, 27, and 32. Is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct, Chairman.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items on the consent agenda. Commissioner Tibbs, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept consent agenda?
All right, and anyone would like to make a second? Vice Chair Farr?
I'll second that motion.
Proper motion, and second. And is there any other discussion? If you would raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to discuss? Seeing no other icon hands, or... Seeing no other icon hands, we are ready to do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims? Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Eyes have it, and the consent agenda is approved. So now we are on to the items to be considered tonight. And so we are now moving on to the public hearing items for tonight. For listeners at home, we have provided multiple ways to participate in this teleconference meeting. Normally, we take the applicant first, then supporters, then opponents, but because of the different ways that people have to participate, we'll actually be taking supporters and opponents together. To help us, please state your name, your address, and whether you support or oppose the request. As usual, we took emailed comments through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. At the start of each public hearing that we'll consider tonight, Lisa will give a summary of how many email comments that we have received on an item, and Sean will tell us if we've, who, if we have any calls. We have a call.
Mr. Chair, do you mind listing the projects, I mean, the cases that we will be hearing tonight? Do you mind listing those numbers?
Yes, I was going to get to that, but I'll do that now. And we are, and Lisa, make sure that I'm right on this. We will be considering five items tonight, Items 21, 22, 24, 25, and 26. Is that correct, Lisa?
Hi, Chairman. That's correct.
There you go, Commissioner Tibbs. Five items.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome, sir. As usual, we took email comments through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. And like I said, we'll tell, we'll get the report on the emails, and then folks can call in to testify. We have a call-in number for members of the public who wish to call in and testify. Please wait until the public hearing for your particular item when you call in, because that will put you into a queue, so we don't want you testifying for the wrong case. If you're calling, please be aware that there is a legally required 30-second federal delay. And that means that if you watch your screen while commenting at TV, it will be slightly behind you. So if you just focus on speaking into the phone and making sure that you also mute your TV, because it will be bad feedback, and for each item, we'll let you know when to call in. And I'll ask Lisa for, like I said, for the email count, how many emails we got. And so, like I said, the items to be considered tonight are Items 21, 22, 24, 25, and 26. And so we are actually ready to begin the first item, but I do see a couple of hands up. Commissioner Tibbs, did you have your hand up, or are you, before we start? Nope. Okay, you. And then Commissioner Johnson, do you have your, you have a question?
Yes, Chair. Item 21 and Item 22, I believe, are both items, public hearing closed. Just want to confirmation on that.
I believe that's true. Let's make sure that is true.
Hi, Chairman. Yes, hi, Chairman. This is Lisa. Yes, Items Number 21 and 22 have both had public hearings, and the public hearings were closed.
Excellent. And so we don't need to present those particular items, is that correct? We just go right into discussion, or are we going to present the items?
I believe we generally do present them because at some point, some of them had updates that you all had asked for when they had been deferred. And so we do present them, but then there's just not a public hearing.
Perfect. And that, that, that's great. And Commissioner Johnson, does that answer your question?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, well, let's hear Item 21, the presentation. There'll be no public hearing on this particular item.
Hi, everyone. It's Amelia. Can you hear me?
Yes, Amelia. Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi. So I will be presenting Item 21, which is Marathon Village. Next slide, please. Block is to apply a historic preservation overlay district to the area that you see on the screen. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Next slide, please. Okay, so for some history on this item, back in April of 2019, a public hearing was held by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, and the commission voted to defer based on concerns regarding the boundaries. In February of 2020, so this past year, the proposed guidelines and area were revised, and the Historic Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the overlay. Also, in February of this past year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and deferred the item for additional time to hear from the applicant. So the applicant was working on things since then. And as Commissioner Johnson mentioned, the public hearing has been closed for this item. So the Planning Commission heard it in February, heard from the public, and closed the public hearing. Next slide, please. Since it's been a little bit since we've heard this request, I'd like to go back and review what a historic preservation overlay does and some of the additional details of this request. Overlay do not replace the base zoning of the properties, but provide additional considerations for development in the areas specified. These areas, in terms of historic preservation, possess a significant concentration, linkage, or continuity of sites, buildings, structures, or objects which are united by past events, or aesthetically by plan or physical development. Next slide, please. So here are the standards on the screen that are for design guidelines and criteria that the Historic Zoning Commission considers in determining the appropriateness of the proposed, any proposed work within the Historic Preservation Overlay District. I'm just kind of an idea of what they would be reviewing and the ideals behind the Historic Preservation Overlay District. Next slide, please. So the specific zoning area requested is an eight acre area bounded by an existing rail line to the north, 12th Avenue North to the east, 16th Avenue North to the west, and an alley located between Clinton and Milson Street. The site has several existing zoning districts, including SP, Coreframe, and Industrial Restrictive. Again, these underlying zoning districts would not change with the Historic Preservation Overlay. Next slide, please. The subject area is located within the urban mixed-use neighborhood policy, which is intended to maintain and enhance urban neighborhoods. The proposed overlay will help to maintain and enhance properties as well as furthering the design principles in the policy. Next slide, please. And with the consistency, based on the recommendation from Historic Zoning and the consistency with the policy, staff recommends approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And so there is no public hearing, so we will go into discussion. And how about we... Oh, and just a note, we do have Robin, who's gone from Historic, if we need to ask Historic questions, so we can, we can call on Robin if we need to. We appreciate them joining us today. So how about we start with Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes. You know, I really don't have a whole lot to add in that this is one of the kind of little treasures of our city anyway. The Marathon Building, it almost was one of the first adaptive reuse, although, you know, in the beginning, it took a while to get there. But I think I always, you know, kind of treasured that area. I think the, the, I guess, the parameters that they, that we've kind of settled in on are, you know, kind of acceptable to the neighborhood. And I think what we ended up with is pretty much captures what, you know, the essence, or I guess the kind of the, what we really wanted to in that area. I think, I keep saying "we" because I think I was, this was one of the last things I was working on when I was on the historical mission, at least one of the ones I remember looking at. So I definitely think this is well-needed. I think this is, it's going to be good because of these, these properties are very unique, and they, they're, you know, they're a tourist attraction too now. So anyway, I'm definitely for this overlay. I do want to pause on just make sure, I know Robin's available for questions, but I want to make sure if Robin has anything else that she wants to add, that maybe the staff report, or if there's anything specific she thinks we need to consider as we're also making our comments. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. And Robin?
Thank you. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak. I did want to point out, if I may, that physically, the two blocks you see there are fairly different. They're of different eras. And so that block in the 1400 block, which is a little bit later, and a lot of the buildings have already been painted, it is our goal to take the design guidelines back to the commission to allow for painted masonry on that block. Typically, preservation around the country doesn't allow that type of thing because of the damage it can do to brick. But again, this is a little bit later. Most of them have already been painted anyway. So just wanted to let you know that change that will be coming up if the district is approved. And again, I'm available if you have questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Sims?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner O'Connell because he does an amazing job in trying to bring all of his constituents together, and I was excited to hear that he... And I was excited to hear that he is going to work, work with the Nelson family because they are, even though the site itself is newer, they actually are the walking history of this area. And of course, their business. So, and I can't think of any job harder than being on Historic Commission. So whenever I can support them, I do. I'm really grateful they're saving this site. So I'm very much in favor of it.
Chairman Atkins, I just noticed that you're on mute. I wanted to...
Whoops, that was me. I thought, Councilwoman Murphy, you're recognized. Sorry about that, everybody.
Thank you. I think that a lot of times we see properties like this and think they will never be torn down, or they will never be drastically changed. And over the past couple of years in Nashville, we've learned that is not always, oh, excuse me, always the case. And so I know last time this was before, as there were some concerns issued or referenced, expressed by the constituents and tenants and property owners. And it seems like from Councilman O'Connell's comments, that it's all been worked out, and I feel much more comfortable supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawson? You recognize Commissioner Lawson? Director, can you hear me?
Chairman, I cannot.
This is Kwan Po for Mr. Legal. Chairman, I did hear you. So I don't, I'm not sure if some people have audio issues or not, but I was able to hear you.
Okay, Director, can you hear me now?
To clarify, I can hear you, Chair, and I've been able to hear you. I am not able to hear Commissioner Lawson.
Oh, okay, okay. Commissioner Lawson? He's unmuted, but I can't, nobody can. Kwan, can you hear Mr. Lawson?
No, sir, I cannot.
Okay. We'll come back to Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I do appreciate Councilman O'Connell's effort, if I remember correctly, because we wanted to hear from a council member. That's the specific, one of the reason we defied the decision. So it was very great to hear, and also very pleased to hear the applicant, the property owner is effectively working with a council member to how to preserve and produce and expand and so forth. So I think Nashville is such a unique place and those building, and I think we, it is very important for us to intentionally preserve and while encouraging expansion and development. And but overlay, under the overlay and the specific guidelines, I think we can achieve both goals. And so I'm very much in favor of staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Farr?
I don't think I have anything else to add. I'm also supportive of this. And I know you're still waiting on Commissioner Lawson, but I'm happy to make a motion if I'm the last.
Well, let's try to get Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah.
And he was, Commissioner Lawson? I still can't hear him. Sean, can you get ahold of Commissioner Lawson and try to figure out his...
Chair, this is Sean at the call center. We'll try to reach out to him and see if we can troubleshoot while you guys continue.
Okay. And is there any other discussion? If you'll raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to discuss? Seeing none, oh, Commissioner Tibbs?
I was going to make a motion if you're ready for it.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure...
Okay, take your time.
Let's, let's, let's wait on, Commissioner Lawson, can you try to unmute your line again? I see that you're unmuted. Can you try to speak into your device again? I just want to make sure we take care of everyone.
Chairman, I wonder if our legal counsel could give us some advice? We're working to reach Commissioner Lawson on the side, but if he could give us some legal advice as to how we would handle Commissioner Lawson's vote if we're unable to hear him speak?
Yes. So, Mr. Poole, we have a quorum without Commissioner Lawson. But, you know, I like to, what's your thought on this?
Thank you, Chairman. I believe you sort of hit the nail on the head there. Because you have a quorum, you would have enough commission members to proceed with the vote.
Without Commissioner Lawson?
That we've, without Commissioner Lawson. In the most recent guidance from the mayor's, excuse me, the governor's office related to these telephonic meetings, they made it quite clear that the roll call vote is important. So without the availability to have him voice his vote, then I would be very apprehensive about, even if we were to do like a raise hand function, I'd be very apprehensive about moving forward in that faction. Hopefully, we can get someone to work with him or reach out to him, or our team maybe, our team can maybe help prior to a vote on the next item.
I would just like to, I always try to err on the side of caution, and I appreciate that, Mr. Poole. I would, let's try him one more time, and then what we can do is take a quick five-minute break and try to fix his issue. So let's try again. Commissioner Lawson, can you, I see you're unmuted, but I can't hear you. Director, can you hear Commissioner Lawson?
I cannot. May I recommend, if Chairman, if you're open to a five-minute break, having Commissioner Lawson log off and then log back on? And that, and that might solve the issue. We have reached out to him separately as well.
See? And Chairman, sorry, this is Sean at the call center. We're actually on the line with Commissioner Lawson currently, but it's going to take us just a moment to get him dialed back in. So that sounds fine, but I wanted you to know that, that we have reached him. We're working on it.
Okay, so let's, let's take a, how about a quick, Vice Chair, what about if we took a quick five-minute break? And then that way, everybody could use the restroom and do that very quickly.
That sounds good, and I, and I second the logging off. I've had WebEx issues, and that does seem to fix it. So, good suggestion, Lucy.
So let's get, we'll take a quick five-minute break. We're at the, there was a proper motion and a second. No, we have not done, excuse me, we have not done a motion or a second. So when we come back, we'll, we'll get a motion and a second, and then discussion on this particular item, if there's any other discussion. So we'll come back at 5:48. And so I will, we will, we will come back at 5:48, everybody. Quick five-minute break. Talk to you then. And back with the ability to be heard. So roll call will be, we'll start with Vice Chair Farr.
I'm here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Lawson? I think, Commissioner Lawson? Hello? We'll come back to Commissioner Lawson.
I'm here.
Oh, there we go. We, welcome back. We are here. All right. We got it fixed.
I'm glad to be back. Mr. Chairman, y'all have figured out something that my wife's been trying to do for 50 years, and that's to get me quiet. So, just don't tell her.
Ah, we won't tell her. We won't tell her.
Welcome back.
I'm glad, glad we figured it out. Councilwoman Murphy?
Present.
Councilwoman Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Sims?
Present.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Here.
Excellent. And I'm here as well. So now we are, we will need a, our proper position is, is we have the presentation, and our current position is, we have the presentation. We are now ready for a motion. And so, Vice Chair, I believe that you were going to initially make a motion.
So I thought Commissioner Tibbs made a motion.
Oh, yeah, let's go back to Commissioner Tibbs. You want to make the original motion, Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve this overlay.
Excellent to, motion to, motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? If you'll raise your icon hand or verbally state you would like to discuss? Seeing no other discussion, we're ready for a roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr? Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Eyes have it, seven ayes, zero against, and the motion is to approve. Now we're on to item number 22. And this is just the present, as we stated before, this is just same thing. This is just the presentation, and then we'll go right into discussion. And...
Hi, everyone. It's Amelia.
Hi, Amelia.
I will be giving the presentation for item 22. Next slide, please. Other request is to rezone a portion of the property from AR2A to CS zoning. The portion of the property to be rezoned is shown in red, is outlined in red on your screen, whereas the whole parcel as it exists today is highlighted in yellow. But for the purposes of the area to be rezoned, we are just looking at the area in red. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Next slide, please. The 13-acre property is located at the northern area of the intersection of Old Hickory Boulevard and Andrew Jackson Parkway. As I mentioned before, this request is to rezone a portion, which is approximately 3.24 acres, shown in gray, shaded in gray on the screen, at the southern corner of the 13-acre property, which is outlined in red. The request is to rezone from AR2A to CS. There's existing floodplain on the site, which is shown in the hatched blue area. Next slide, please. This item was heard at the last meeting in August. And again, the public hearing was held and closed. The item was deferred in order to provide clarification on the area within the floodplain, as well as for the applicant to work with the existing tenant of the property. So now I will provide you with an update on both of those issues. Next slide, please. The applicant has provided the graphic on the screen. So the graphic on the left is the existing floodplain and conservation area that's shown in green. Everything outside that's in white is outside of the floodplain area and the conservation policy. The image on the right shows the requested zoning line in black, or the area that is south of that line would be rezoned. The green area, the change in the green area shows the modified floodplain area. If you see from the totals on the bottom, the area on the site within the floodplain area will remain the same, which is 9.87 acres. The applicant and developer, if the rezoning is approved, will work with Metro Stormwater Standards on infill and keeping the existing area of the conservation and floodplain area the same. Next slide, please. Comments from the existing tenant, property owner, as well as the public, about the potential loss and uncertainty of the existing driving range. The applicant and their team have been meeting with the current tenant operating the driving range and are in discussions about relocation on the site. As I mentioned, the rezoning area would be just over three acres. There is, so nine acres would be remaining of green space that could be used to relocate the driving range for another recreational use. As well as, I believe Councilman Hager mentioned, the existing tenant of the driving range has an existing lease on the property, and the applicants are working to honor that existing lease, at least for a couple of years. Next slide, please. And just to review the policy on the site, when we look at rezonings, conservation area is applied where there are environmentally sensitive features. According to the policy guidance for conservation, construction of new buildings in previously undisturbed conservation areas is inappropriate unless the site in question cannot be developed at all without some disturbance of the sensitive environmental features. The suburban community center policy, shown in orange on the screen, makes up a majority of the portion of the property that's to be rezoned, which is outlined in red. This policy area is intended for commercial uses, which is supported by the surrounding context, adequate infrastructure, and access as it is located at the intersection of two arterial boulevards. As I mentioned, the proposed area for rezoning is primarily within the T3CC policy and meets many of the criteria to support such a rezoning. The property is located in a predominantly commercial area and at the intersection of two roads. The area that is requested to be rezoned has a minimal portion of conservation area on the policy. And given the policy guidance on sites that are both suburban community center as well as conservation, there strikes a balance between permitting some development within the area while still remaining most of that conservation area on the site. Next slide, please. Given the request consistent with policy and the minimal area of conservation included in the area for rezoning, staff recommends approval of the item. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Amelia. We appreciate it. And so we're not having a public hearing, but we did hear from the Councilman, Councilman Hager, and I want to make sure if he wants to add anything else, Councilman, before we get into discussion. Councilman, are you good to go? We heard you comment earlier on this.
Yeah, I'm still here, and all of you should have that letter from the developer that he's going to continue to work with them to continue to have that driving range there. But as I recall, that was the major impediment and complaints, is they wanted to keep that golf range. So it'll be there for at least a couple of years, and hopefully they'll work something out where they can keep it longer than that. So I'm fine with it right now, and I don't have a problem approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. If we have questions, we'll let you know. Thank you. I appreciate it. And so we are now ready for discussion. Commissioner Johnson, you want to go first?
Chair, sure, I'd be happy to. This was, you know, first when I saw this zone change request, I thought it was a very difficult one because it was a clear discrepancy with community plan and base zoning. But after hearing from applicant and council member, and although this is not SP zoning... and although this is not SP, uh, zoning, just straightforward zoning, but I'm, uh, very pleased to see the commitment from the applicant to work with existing, uh, you know, golf range operator, because to mandate, uh, those businesses con- continue or not is, you know, above and beyond, it's not our, uh, uh, authority. So I am glad to hear they are still working and try to accommodate, uh, the community's voice. And also, uh, as Commissioner Haines requested, uh, new development will not interfere with the conservation area, and especially stay clear from the floodplain, and I think presentation confirmed, uh, the development, uh, is out of the floodplain. So both are two points, uh, since our last meeting to, uh, new update. I am, uh, comfortable, uh, supporting staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Lawson? Oh, we might be having. Commissioner? Commissioner Lawson?
Yes?
Any discussion on this item?
Nothing that I could add to it and would support staff recommendation when the motion is, is made.
Thank you, Commissioner. Council Lady Murphy?
Thank you, I'd like to commend Councilman Hager for working out, um, the details on this one, and I think it sounds like it's good to go.
All right, Commissioner Sims?
For the record, I wasn't here when the, uh, with the, but I did watch it on YouTube, and, um, I think again, like, uh, Councilwoman said, our Councilman Hager did a good job with this, and, um, I did drive by it, and it looks really appropriate to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs?
Yeah, I, I agree with, um, Councilman Murphy's, um, uh, statement. Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Hager for working with them, and, and thank you applicant. Um, and I think that, uh, looks like they, they've had the community process, they've done the things that we talked about, so I'll be in favor of it.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chair Farr?
Um, thank you, similar to Commissioner Tibbs, I was not at the original, uh, at the meeting where this was originally presented, but I also watched the, the video on YouTube, um, and appreciate that there was a compromise. A, a compromise was figured out, um, that protects the important asset of the driving range for the community. Um, am I last, and if so, I'm happy to make a motion of, that we approve staff's recommendation.
Yeah, it's a proper motion, and how about Commissioner Lawson wants to make a second?
Second.
It's a proper motion and second, any other discussion, if you'll raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to discuss? Seeing no other discussion, we are ready for a roll call vote, Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and eyes have it, and this item, item twenty-two, is adopted. And now we're on to item number twenty-four. And Amelia, she's busy tonight.
Hi, everyone, it's Amelia again, um, I believe this is my last item for the night though. Um, item twenty-four is a request for rezoning along River Drive, uh, next slide please. The request is to rezone from RS ten to RA alternative zoning. Next slide please. Staff recommends, um, the disapproval of the requested R eight A zoning and approval of the requ- of the suggested R ten A zoning district. Next slide please. The site is approximately point four acres, located on the north side of River Drive, um, north of the intersection of Doak Avenue and River Drive. As you can see on the zoning map on the screen, a majority of the surrounding parcels, um, are zoned RS ten. As such, the area has been developed with primarily single-family uses and some two-family development. Given the larger size of the site and the acreage, if the requested R eight A zoning were approved, it could permit two duplex eligible lots for a total of four units. Given the surrounding land uses and context, staff recommends the R ten A zoning district, which, if approved, would permit one duplex eligible lot for a maximum of two units. And next slide please. Um, the policy for the site is suburban neighborhood evolving policy. The policy states that when we are considering opportunities for infill and redevelopment in these policy areas, the following factors should be considered: the existing developed character of the area, the street network, and proximity to centers and corridors. There are several characteristics of this site, such as the surrounding mix of one and two family units in the area, and the larger size of the lot, that support a rezoning from the existing single-family zoning to a one and two-family zoning district. However, given that the site is located on the edge of a policy area away from nearby centers and corridors, and the size of the site would permit a subdivision in the development of up to four units. Um, four units as what could be developed under the R eight A zoning on this property is likely too intense for the policy, um, with the intent to create and enhance suburban neighborhoods with additional housing at a scale, um, similar and compatible with the neighborhood. Staff recommends the R ten A zoning district, which would permit the development of no more than two units to allow the development of additional housing that is more consistent with the intent of the policy and the surrounding area. The R ten A district is also consistent with the policy to create suburban neighborhoods with moderate density and additional housing choice. Next slide please. Given the surrounding development patterns and possible development scenarios between the R eight and the R ten zoning districts, and the guidance in the policy, staff recommends disapproval of the requested R eight A zoning district and approval of the R ten A zoning district. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you Amelia, we appreciate that, and so now it's time to open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant on the line, Sean?
Yes.
Perfect, you have ten minutes for your presentation, and you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal if you don't use it, and if you can state your name and address, and welcome.
Absolutely, uh, thank you so much, hi, this is Alex Craw, my address is six ten Basswood Avenue. Uh, thank you for taking the time to hear our case. Uh, we were hoping to rezone this property to R eight A based on a successful August twenty nineteen rezone, um, on the same street up at thirty-one oh seven River Drive, which is about nine houses up the street. And this property had the same lot size, frontage, and zoning as well. With an R eight zoning, our plan was to build four units total. Two of those units would be dedicated as workforce housing, long-term rentals, with application preference given to teachers and first responders. The other two units would be for resale for less than three hundred thousand. All four units would be no more than two stories in height and likely two-bedroom homes with square footages less than thirteen hundred square feet. We would also hope this encourages less car ownership per unit, so parking is less of a concern on that street, but all the units would have a dedicated, uh, two-car parking pad. The units would also showcase a view of the Cumberland River and Ted Rhodes Golf Course on the other side of the river. Last month, Councilwoman Tooms hosted a Zoom neighborhood meeting that I presented at. The meeting had low attendance, but we were shown some support from her constituents. Planning has recommended that they would support R ten A, which would allow us to build two units. My understanding was that the recommendation was based largely on the property's distance from a major street or a corridor. Although this property is closer to the middle of the street, it, it is surrounded by existing duplexes, um, next door, and several duplexes directly across the street. There's also a, a triplex that was just demolished a couple of months ago. Uh, the neighboring addresses are shown in greater ti- uh, detail on a, an attached PDF, and I wanna see if you could pull that slide up as well. Or maybe it didn't make it, that's okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, hold on, if you can, Sean, if you can pause his time, let me see if I have something that I'm supposed to be presenting.
The time is paused.
Thank you.
Lisa, this is Amelia, I do believe that I might have, um, forgotten to include them, um, but I can send them to you quickly. I'm sorry about that, Alex.
No, it's fine, I think you've, uh, had enough on your plate tonight.
Apologies, I'm just changing what I'm sharing, just bear with me for a moment.
No worries.
Was this the one, or was it the second with the survey?
That, that is, I also had a survey, but that, that is the one I wanted to just bring up to show that the development is directly, uh, in the proximity. With, with that being said, uh, we feel like having two units each, um, on a fifty-foot wide and by a hundred and sixty-foot deep lot would, would blend in well with the existing neighborhood, um, and we would also keep these units, all two stories in height, um, a- and all would have brick facades to match the character of the existing older homes. Um, we would certainly love to build the four units and provide the workforce housing units and, quote-unquote, affordable, less than three hundred thousand dollars, new construction units, but if, if the planning does not support this, we will certainly understand and follow the staff recommendation for a rezone to R ten A, and just to c- construct the two units, although they, they probably will be, uh, larger in size a- and in character as well as, um, as price. Um, and unfortunately, we, we would not be able to do the, the workforce housing rentals in that scenario. But, um, I really appreciate, uh, the time and your consideration, and, and thank you Amelia for all your, your hard work on this and for your communication.
Thank you, and, and we'll save two minutes, uh, for your rebuttal. And so we are, we are now ready, uh, at this time to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screens should now show the calling number. Please call in, uh, you don't need to wait to call, to wait to call in, because you'll be placed in a queue, so you can call in right now. As a reminder, please only call in on the current case, uh, which is item number twenty-four. Uh, when you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose this particular application. We're not able to, to display a timer visually, so Sean will be keeping track of time, she'll give you thirty-second warning. Um, everyone has two minutes to speak, uh, she'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left and when your time has ended. Um, and so we appreciate everyone calling in. Uh, while we wait for callers to call in, uh, as I stated earlier, uh, in this meeting, uh, Lisa, are there any emails on this particular item?
Hi Chairman, we received, um, one email in opposition.
One email in opposition, thank you very much. And I wanna thank everyone for calling, for emailing. Uh, Sean, do we have any callers at this time?
Chair, we do not currently have any callers in the queue, um, we'll take a brief pause to make sure no one's trying to reach us, and then I'll check back in with you.
You?
Chair, we do not have any callers in the queue for this item.
Okay, uh, thank you, and, uh, we are net, so we'll let the council member speak, uh, last thing, Councilmember Tooms is still on, so. But does the applicant, there, there's, since nobody has spoke in opposition, do you have anything else to say for rebuttal? Your two minutes, or do you just wanna let the Councilwoman go?
No, I will, I will let, uh, I'll defer to the Councilwoman, thank you.
Okay, Council Lady Tooms, you're, you're recognized.
Thank you, um, I, I definitely understand the, the perspective of the staff in regard to the current character of the neighborhood, and that it's mostly single-family homes and, uh, some duplexes. It is an older neighborhood, and, and my goal as the councilperson is to preserve the character of the established neighborhoods. In the district, I think what, uh, was appealing to the residents who attended the community meeting, uh, was that there was some workforce housing being included, and I know that is a, a big concern for a lot of folks in the district that, um, there'd be affordable housing options for, uh, future homeowners and not just high-end deals. Uh, and so for that reason, I do support the R eight, um, if there were, if there were gonna be four market rate homes, I, I would not support it. Um, but because there is an effort on the part of, of Alex and his team to do some workforce housing, and to build reasonably priced, uh, homes for sale, that's why I, I support it, and, and I would encourage the commission to approve the R eight. I think this is a unique situation, like I said, if it was for market place, huh, market rate homes, I would not, uh, support it. I don't think it would have gotten any community support, but because there's an effort to do, uh, basically affordable housing, um, I, I think that's why the, the residents supported it, and that's definitely why I support it.
Thank you, Council Lady, we, we appreciate it, and so now we are, uh, now we will close this item for public hearing, and we are on to discussion, Vice Chair, do you wanna go first?
Can you hear me okay? Sorry, I switched head, to his headset. Okay, um, I actually don't have extensive comments, it sounds to me as though they have figured out somewhat of a, of a, um, compromise here that's, that will work for the applicant, um, and that the council lady is comfortable with, so, um, I think that I am comfortable with staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you Chair, I do appreciate, you know, applicant, uh, intent to introduce, you know, workforce, force housing and so forth, because we in Asheville has definitely have shortage of affordable, you know, a good reasonable price housing. However, you know, as a commissioner, uh, that, uh, this is a just strict of zone change request, and we cannot, uh, condition, you know, how much, uh, the housing should sell for and so forth. So considering, uh, surrounding, uh, established neighborhood, although this is a, a policy is a neighborhood evolving, so evolve from one whole, uh, house to four will be, be too much, even though considering that across the street is, you know, some recent duplexes introduced as a form of SP. So for that reason, I think, uh, staff recommendation for, for R ten A is more appropriate.
Commissioner Lawson?
I'd like to hear a little more discussion. It's a tough one. I like the staff recommendation, same time, there is a pattern for the other zoning request. I'm going to listen to some other discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Council Lady Murphy.
Thank you, this is a, a time that gives me a flashback of where Council, uh, former Council Lady Johnson and I tend to say a lot of the same things. This is a situation where a developer has come and, and has said that there would be two, two homes to sell, it sounds like, and then two that would be rented as affordable housing. But we have no way to guarantee the long-term affordable housing rental, or even that housing would be sold at an affordable rate and stay that way, once it changes hands, so on and so forth. And without that guarantee, it's very hard to have a stick and a carrot here, and it is not appropriate zoning. If we did have those tools, then it's a different conversation. But the reality is, is, and with the state of the legislature and the state of Metro at this time, we don't have any of those guarantees to give to the community. And so at this time, there's just no way I can support anything other than the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims.
I absolutely agree with the staff. I've, I've personally experienced what happens when a neighborhood without a lot of careful thought and close attendance to our existing zoning codes grows disproportionately to its ability to stay, keep its character. So I like going to duplex, but certainly not four.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs.
I, I, I think I'm kind of more succinctly with what Commissioner Simms said, and, and I do, you know, I, I do, you know, encourage development in that area, and I certainly, you know, applaud the, what, you know, the developer and even some of the councilmen's conversation about it, but I agree, I feel a lot better for two, you know, but four is a lot. And, and as Councilman Murphy said, we just don't have the tools to really assure the affordable housing component that they spoke of. So I also agree with staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner, and then we'll go back to Commissioner Lawson, you have any other discussion?
Having heard the discussion, and, and all of it is very relevant. I am going to support the staff recommendation.
Okay, why don't you make a motion, Commissioner?
I, I, I move to approve the staff recommendation.
Which is the R10As.
R10, correct.
That's a proper motion, is there a second? Commissioner Tibbs?
Second.
Proper second, any other discussion, if you, is there any other discussion? If you raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to discuss? Seeing no discussion, we are on a roll-call vote to approve staff's recommendation of R10A. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Eyes have it, and the staff recommendation is approved. Now we are on to item number 25, and I think that's going to be Logan.
Yes, thank you, Chair, my name is Logan Elliott, and I'll be presenting item 25, next slide, please. The request is to expand the urban zoning overlay district in South Nashville. As a reminder, overlay districts apply a layer of regulation that is additional to the base zoning requirement, next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve the request, next slide. Looking at the subject area, the land use is primarily commercial, industrial, multifamily residential, and community or institutional, with some office or medical office and vacant land uses. The properties included in the proposal are mostly within non-residential zoning districts, next slide, please. The area proposed for application of the UZO includes properties located within numerous land use policies. The area centers around Murphysboro Pike, and the properties fronting onto the Pike have urban mixed-use corridor policy. As you move away from Murphysboro Pike, the area is largely district industrial land use policy. Other policies present in the application are mixed-use neighborhoods, civic, urban and suburban open space, and district major institutional. The district major institutional policy recognizes the campus of Treveka Nazarene University. The conservation policy that is present in this area recognizes streams, floodplains, significant slopes, and other sensitive environmental features. Next slide, please. As re, or previous slide. Right there, thank you. As redevelopment or infill development occurs, the standards of the UZO will support a development form that is more urban and supportive of multimodal transportation. The varied standards of the UZO, which are specific to the certain district, to the zoning districts and land uses, make the UZO an adaptable zoning tool to ensure that development and redevelopment occur in a context-sensitive manner without impacting the base entitlements of the zoning district. Application of the UZO will help to achieve a wide range of goals identified in Nashville Max and the other various community plans for the area. These, the goals include enhanced pedestrian connectivity, activation of the streetscape, and support for existing and future transit service in the area. Next slide, please. Staff recommends approval of the request, and I am here to answer any questions that you may have, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, and so on this particular item, since it's an urban zoning overlay, it's been requested by councilmembers Colby Sledge and Freddie O'Connell, we heard from Councilman O'Connell earlier, and I don't see Councilman Sledge on the line, so they're really the applicant's director. So I, I believe that we can move on to calls from the public, is that correct?
That's correct, I was just scrolling one more time, and I don't see either of the councilmembers, so I would proceed to hearing.
Okay, excellent, and so now we are ready to take calls from the pub, public, so please call in now. As I said before, you don't need to wait because we'll put you in a queue, you don't have to wait till speaker is finished calling. As a reminder, please only call in on this case, case item 25. State your name, address, and whether you support or oppose the project. And Sean will let you know when you have two minutes to speak, Sean will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then when your time has ended. I appreciate everyone for calling in, and so now we need to get the report, the email report from Lisa. Lisa, how many emails?
Hi Chairman, we did not receive email on this item.
Thank you, and Sean, do we have any callers for this item right now?
Chairman, we do have callers, so we'll get the first caller lined up to be placed in.
Excellent, thank you.
And Chair, you have the first caller.
Excellent, and caller, we welcome you, you got two minutes to speak, and please state your name and address, and you may begin.
My name is Carlos Bridge, and my address is 51 Compton Street, Nashville, Tennessee, 2710. I am for the zoning overlay, the only concern or maybe question that I may have is that if the zoning overlay is going to concern any change in a street modification, such as any widening of street or anything that may affect our existing property line ownership, really change the boundary of the thing.
Caller, we'll answer that question, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll answer the question once we finish, so you can keep testifying.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's, that's all, no one mentioned.
Okay, well, thank you for calling in, and, and we, we can, we can ask one of the staff members to address that when we, when we start the discussion of that item, so thank you for calling in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sean, next caller.
Chairman, we don't currently have other callers in the queue, so we'll take a, a brief pause in case anyone's trying to reach us, and then I'll check back in.
Thank you.
Chair, we have no additional callers for this item.
Thank you, Sean, and so let's make sure that council members are not on the line. Director, do you see Councilmember Sledge or O'Connell, do not? And so seeing no one else wishing to speak, that's clear the public hearing closed, and so now we are on to discussion. And I think the first question, before we getting to the commissioners, let's try to answer the question from the caller, would the property lines move, Lisa, or who wants to answer that question?
Hi Chairman, this is Lisa, no application of this overlay would not cause any changes to current existing property lines.
Thank you very much, and so how about, since there wasn't a lot of opposition callers, why don't we try to do this by, instead of going down the line of each commissioner, is there any in hearing from the council members on this particular item, let's see if there's any discussion. So if there's discussion, if you'd raise your hand or verbally state that you would like to discuss the commissioners, you would raise your icon hand, you'd like to discuss. So I don't, I don't see any commissioners wishing to speak, and so we'll need a motion from a commissioner. Vice Chair, do you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion, Commissioner Tibbs, you want a second?
I second that.
Proper second, any other discussion? If you would raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to discuss? Seeing no other discussion, we're ready for a roll-call vote to approve staff recommendation on item 25, Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Sorry, aye.
Thank you, Commissioner, eyes have it, and item 25 is approved. So we are now on to our last public hearing item, which is item number 26, and that is Abby, I believe.
Hi everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Abby.
All right.
Go ahead.
Sure, so the last item is number 26, next slide. This is a request to rezone from R20 to IWD zoning for property located at Ned Shelton Road, southwest of the intersection of Ned Shelton and Bell Road on 7.27 acres. For context, Couchville Pike is located to the north, near the top of the slide. I do want to note that this case was previously noticed as a request for a regulatory SP under case number 2020ST-015-001, which proposed to permit all uses of the IWD zoning district. The SP comprised several parcels located on about 73 acres total, and proposed to limit access at the front of the site along Ned Shelton Road. A staff report for the SP was previously published, published on the August 27th Planning Commission Agenda with the staff recommendation to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The SP has since been converted to a straight rezone request under the case that you're currently considering, which proposes IWD zoning for one of the parcels that was included on, in the previous request, and this parcel is outlined in red. The parcel proposed for IWD zoning comprises approximately 7.27 acres. No rezoning is currently proposed on the remaining parcels that were included with the SP request. Next slide. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, next slide. The parcel is vacant, it's located on the west side of Ned Shelton Road, south of Couchville Pike and southeast of the intersection of Ned Shelton and Bell Road. A small portion of the site contains street frontage, with the majority of the parcel jogging to the west and south, away from the road. Note that this view is rotated slightly from the other slide, next slide. Surrounding properties along Ned Shelton are primarily zoned for residential uses. In 2019, a portion of the adjacent parcel to the north, the parcel 157, was rezoned from R20 to IWD zoning, resulting in R20 zoning being retained up at the front along Ned Shelton and IWD zoning located on the back half. Properties located directly west and on the south side of Couchville Pike are predominantly zoned for and contain existing industrial uses, next slide. This rezone is consistent with the district employment center policy at this site, which supports light industrial uses at appropriate locations. The zone change would allow for various uses pertaining to wholesaling, warehousing, and bulk distribution uses, which are appropriate in the district employment center policy. Given the surrounding non-industrial uses along Ned Shelton Road, staff has included a condition prohibiting access to Ned Shelton Road, consistent with the policy guidance to ensure compatibility with the non-industrial uses in the area, and also to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community, next slide. Therefore, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you, Abby, appreciate that, and so we'll open this item for public hearing, and Sean is the applicant on the line.
Chair, we do have representatives from the applicant, and they should be unmuted and able to speak.
Excellent, welcome applicant, we appreciate you calling in, you have 10 minutes and can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and address, and you may begin.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you, go ahead.
Wonderful, yes, my name is John Dittah with State Street Group, and I'm representing, my company, State Street Group, is the developer and Duke Week's Realty, who is the owner of this property, and my address is 1902 Wedgewood Avenue. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the commission. And, uh, my address is 1902 Wedgewood Avenue. Um, appreciate the opportunity to speak to the commission, um, this evening. Um, we plan to show a couple of slides, but, uh, first I just wanted to thank, uh, Council Lady Porterfield, the Metro Planning Department, and our neighbors for working through this process, uh, with us. As you can see from the slide here, um, we are proposing to, um, rezone, uh, seven acres from R20 to IWD, which is, um, basically a continuation of the IWD zoning in the, um, in the area and also, um, adjacent to property that we currently own. So, uh, we own the property immediately to the, um, north or to the right of, of this slide, um, of the subject, uh, property. Um, access to the Airport Commerce Drive, um, this, this property will access Airport Commerce Drive, which is adjacent to the property and has, um, will have no access to Ned Shelton Road. Um, and as Abby mentioned, that's a condition of, was recommended by the planning department and one that we, um, wholeheartedly, um, uh, agree with. I know Council Lady Porterfield, um, made a comment earlier in the, um, meeting about, or question about kind of why we decided to go with that, um, uh, condition and, and the, I guess it was a recommendation of the, uh, uh, planning department. The purpose was to limit access to Ned Shelton Road, which is, uh, primarily a residential road. Um, by combining or by zoning this property IWD, we were able to combine it with our existing property and access, uh, Airport Commerce Drive, which is essentially the main thoroughfare for Airport East, which is a, uh, 20-year-old, uh, or more than 20-year-old, um, business park, um, in this area. Um, the IWD zoning is in line with the community plan. It calls for district employment, including light industrial uses. Uh, we did not have to add, we did not ask the zoning, uh, the planning board for a, um, change to the community plan. Um, IWD is consistent with the adjacent property, as evidenced by this slide. And it's supported by Council Lady Porterfield, the Metro Planning, uh, the Metro, uh, Planning Department and our most immediate neighbors, um, which is evidenced by letters of support, um, from them. Um, our plan, um, Abby, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, please. Our, our plan is to continue the development of high-quality, um, light industrial flat space. This is a photograph of our development, which is just to the north of the subject property called Hamilton Creek. Um, this property is under construction now and, um, the land that we are asking to rezone will be, um, developed in a similar manner. Um, this, these buildings will contain, um, businesses that many are new to the area. Um, uh, you know, sample, um, customers that we have in our other buildings include Gibson Guitar and Home Depot, companies of that sort. Um, we actually have Home Depot moving into this building, um, shown in this photograph. So, that concludes our remarks and we will be available for any, any questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And I believe you have two minutes for rebuttal. Is that correct, Sean?
Yes, Chair, we will reserve two minutes.
Excellent. So, now we are ready to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show the call-in number. Please call in. Uh, you don't need to wait, um, until after the, each caller speaks because when you call, we put you in a queue. Um, as a reminder, please only call on this particular case, our last case. We're not able to display a timer visually, so Sean will let you know, everyone has two minutes to speak. Sean will let you know when you have 30 seconds left. And she will also let you know when your time is expired. So, uh, everybody start calling in. While we wait for callers to call in, check with Lisa on emails. Any emails?
Hi Chairman, we received, uh, one letter in opposition and three letters in support. And I would like to note that those are representative of emails that came in when this item was also planned as an SP and included a more broad area.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate it. Sean, do we have any, um, callers that called in?
Chair, we do not currently have any callers, so we'll take a brief pause and then I'll check back in.
Thank you.
Chair, we don't have any callers for this item.
Thank you, Sean. And so, we are on, on the portion for rebuttal, but, um, since no one called in, um, the council member is on the line. And so, um, does the applicant, do you want to say anything else in rebuttal or, or let the council member go?
Um, yes, this is John. I, I don't have any, um, any further comments. Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you. And now we are, uh, ready for, uh, Council Lady Porterfield. Are you, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'll just speak really briefly and, uh, thank you guys so much for giving me the opportunity. And, um, I, I know I spoke earlier, so I'll keep my comments extremely brief. Um, again, thank you to the applicant who has been just very flexible with, uh, deferring this legislation to make sure that, um, you know, we kind of worked through some of the concerns that the community had with COVID. Uh, we, again, we will have a community meeting. So, if there are any concerns from the community, they will have the opportunity to speak with me, uh, prior to me bringing this legislation, uh, before the council. And if there are concerns, I will work with the, uh, developer to make sure that, um, you know, this is something that the community feels comfortable with. Uh, the residents along Couchfold Pike have all been very supportive and have asked that, um, we do keep this, uh, area or that we are continuing to make sure that this is the IWD area. Um, my biggest concern was making sure that there was not access to Ned Shelton, um, based on the safety of the community. But since that is, uh, in here and that, uh, since they will not be able to, uh, access Ned Shelton, uh, I am not in opposition. And, uh, I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Council Lady. We really appreciate you joining us. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And so, we are up now for discussion from the commissioners. And how about we start with Council Lady Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. I think it sounds like this has all been worked out for the best and I'm good to go with it.
Okay. Commissioner Lawson?
I ditto that comment.
Excellent. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I have, uh, just a quick question to staff. Uh, all the conditional recommendation from, uh, Fire Marshal, Public Works, and Water Service, uh, it is written based on the previous SP, uh, plan, regulatory SP, but it also look like it may apply to IWD zoning when, uh, there is, uh, actual, uh, plan to be submitted. Uh, could you confirm, uh, that point?
All right, I was, I was myself, um, in two locations. Um, yeah, so most of those, those recommendations are standard conditions. Um, and so, those requirements and those details would be worked out with the building permit.
Excellent. Thank you. So, no further question. I support staff recommendation.
Thank you. Vice Chair Farr.
I don't think I have further comments either. It seems like an appropriate use of the site. It's consistent with policy and, um, I support staff's recommendation.
All right. Commissioner Tibbs?
Um, I was about to make a motion to approve, but I forgot. I think Coach, um, Commissioner Sims still has to speak. But, uh, I also, um, agree with staff recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Sims, you're last.
Go ahead, Commissioner Tibbs, and make a recommendation. I'll second it.
I, I make a motion to approve.
And I second it.
That's a proper motion and a proper second to approve staff recommendation on item number 26. And is there any other discussion? If you would raise, commissioners, if you would raise your icon hand or verbally state you would like to discuss? And I don't see any answers. Seeing no further discussion, we're ready for a roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ayes have it. And item number 26 is approved. So, now we are on to other business. But, before we get to other, well, I guess this is other business. It's new business. Um, I have a really sad thing I got to tell the commissioners and, and, and the director and I, um, discussed this and, and we are very sad, but I want to inform everyone. Uh, this is, uh, Mr. Poole, Mr. Quan Poole's last night. He, uh, um, or close to that. He is, he is, uh, leaving Metro to greener pastures. And, uh, I, I know personally I am going to, to miss, uh, Mr. Poole. He, uh, has done an excellent job for us, uh, in, in leading the commission, uh, in, in legal matters and as our attorney. Uh, I just want to say thank you for all that he has done for us. He's done an outstanding job. He's a bright young man. He's going to go very, to, to great places and, and do great things. So, um, Mr. Poole, I know that I'm going to miss you very, very much. I know the director and I are. Director, you want to say anything?
Well, I just, our, our working relationship with our legal team is so important. And I would just echo everything that was said and Quan has said, exceptional patience and leadership with the team. So, we're grateful to, to him. So, thank you, Quan.
Exactly. Commissioners, anybody else want to say something for Quan?
Uh, Quan, I just, uh, worked with you on your, with historical commission too, so, uh, I wish you well. And, um, you know, thanks for all the service you've provided, uh, over this period of time. We will miss you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you so much. I would like to echo and really appreciate, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Poole's, uh, guidance and service to Metro and both commission, uh, you know, planning commission, zoning commission, uh, really long and hardworking commission among the, all the metro commissions. And I really appreciate, you know, Mr. Poole and your service. And best wishes to wherever the big world you're going to.
Thank you. And, uh, Council Lady Murphy?
Thank you. I too would just like to say good luck and thank you for your service. Um, Metro Legal is not the most glamorous place at times. And so, um, we just really appreciate, on behalf of the council, thank you for what you've done for, for Metro.
Excellent. Anyone else?
I do. I want to say, uh, thank you so much for your quiet and gentle spirit. Sometimes this commission can get chaotic and you are always just so quietening and so, um, constant in your support of us. And we wish you all the luck in the world.
Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Poole. We recognize.
Well, I, I would like to say, uh, thank you to, to everyone for your kind thoughts. Um, I'm actually fortunate that we're in COVID and I'm behind my computer spring, so y'all don't see the blessing of my face right now. Um, but, uh, you know, I really appreciate everyone. It's, it's been my honor and privilege to provide advice and assistance to this commission for the past, right at two years. I think I really appreciate y'all's patience as I was entering this new world and, and trying to figure out and determine terminology and, and phrases that were foreign to me. Um, and so, thank you to the staff for working through all the questions that I had and, and, and not even quite understanding what a, a general plan or a policy meant. I, I feel like, uh, there were so many questions that I had at the beginning and, and they never, um, they, they never thought I had a, a silly question, although some of them, I'm quite sure they were silly. Um, but, but then also thank you to the commission. You know, I've seen up close and person the, the issues that this commission has to battle with as it tries to shape and grow the development of the city while also, um, balancing the, the needs of the original Nashvillians and wanting to make sure everyone continues to have their place at the table. I know it's hard. It, it's often thankless. Um, but I think you all do a great and spectacular job of, of balancing those things. And, and more often than not, mostly always, y'all, y'all come out on the right side of things. Um, so, for, um, all that you all do, I'd just like to say thank you. Uh, I will still be here with Metro for, uh, another few weeks through, through the middle of October. So, if you have any questions, you're welcome to still reach out to me and, and I'll be here and I'll be able to assist the best I can. But, thank you. It really means a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. So, we might, might have you for one more meeting. So, we, we, we appreciate you very, very much. And, um, you're going to be missed. But, good luck.
I think Alex will probably take the next meeting, but I'll, I'll just be still within Metro. So, this, this will be my last meeting, unfortunately.
Well, good. I'm glad that we, we, we knew that. And, um, thank you so much. So, uh, other business. So, we are now on to historic. Anything in historic?
No Chairman, uh, no report from historic.
Okay. Uh, item 30, Par, uh, Parks. Jeff's not here. Anything in Parks, Director?
No, Chair.
Okay. Executive Committee, Vice Chair, I don't think that we have anything to report, do we, other than just we, I believe that our plan, uh, and Lucy can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but I believe our plan is so far is to, to go, to do the remote meetings, um, through October. Uh, and then, um, uh, see where the, the Governor's executive order is and, uh, the numbers and, and all that. And, and if there's a safe, if there's potentially a safe way to get us back together. Is that correct, Director? Or do you want to add anything to that?
No, I would just say, um, that's absolutely correct. Uh, we're going to, um, go through October as we have been remotely. We will be, uh, have the benefit of seeing, uh, council go back to in-person, uh, meetings, um, at the convention center. And so, we'll see how, um, you know, we will learn from, from that experience. And as always, we'll be balancing the safety, um, of the commission and, and Nashvillians with our public service responsibilities. And so, I, I feel confident, um, that we will, we will work it, work it out the way that, that we need to. But I will be in touch, um, with you as we, as we learn more and get additional guidance from the, from the Governor's office.
And, uh, thank you, Director, uh, the Vice Chair. And I will, um, be in contact with, with the Director and making sure that, um, we do this, this balance. Anything you want to add, Vice Chair?
No, I think, uh, you, you and the Director just covered it.
Excellent. And so, I don't, well, one, one other thing, um, on the executive committee report. So, I, I know that we have had a lot of, uh, additional conference calls. I just, uh, for various things that we have, um, kept our word on in, in covering and in doing the things that, that we're supposed to be doing. And so, I want to thank, um, folks for participating. I know it, it's really excellent that, that y'all have, um, participated in those items. And we'll continue to have those and we'll make sure that, I, I believe we have one coming in October. I want to thank the commissioners for responding to Kelly for that. So, we'll keep everyone posted on those. as we continue to, to do our, our business in moving the city forward. So next is Director? Director's report, any?
I think, I think you covered it. Just thanks to each of the commissioners for your service.
Excellent. Council Lady, any legislative update?
Nope, all good. Thank you.
All right. And our next meeting is October 8th. And I look forward to joining another call with the commissioners and the public and everyone else and the, and the staff team. So with that, we are now, I need, we need a motion to adjourn. There a motion to adjourn?
I make adjourn.
A proper motion and second, and without objection, we are adjourned. Talk to everybody next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.